Ready to go?
Excellent, thank you. Good evening. I call the meeting of the Falmouth Public Schools to order for March 8th, 2022. Per Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public will not be allowed to physically access this school committee meeting, but it can be viewed live on Channel 14 and a recording of this meeting can be viewed on YouTube. First, let's stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded. If any member of the public would like to make an audio or video recording of this meeting, please notify me by raising the hand icon on your screen, and I will notify the public for the Massachusetts Public Meeting Laws. Do we have anyone who is making a recording tonight? And let's check. I see one hand. Megan, hi Megan, thank you. Megan Hanawalt, okay. Next, mission and vision, Terri.
The Falmouth Public Schools' mission. The Falmouth Public Schools creates world-class student learning experiences. Our Clippers are empowered to pursue their goals with curiosity, integrity, and resiliency. The Falmouth Public School vision. Clippers are creative, inquisitive, and engaged learners who participate in their community as socially responsible citizens. Clippers effectively communicate and solve problems that impact the world around them.
Thank you, Terri. And the fishbowl, Melissa.
Let's see what we have here. Am I reading a green and a blue?
Yes, please.
Okay. Green. This is from Room 214 at Lawrence, grade eight. The students would like less advisory, longer lunch, and removing the dress code. They also wanted Bulldog time to return.
Thank you very much, Room 214.
Thank you, Room 214. And a blue. This is from C. Clark from FHS, grade 10. What is going well in your school? What do you like most in your school? Clipper time and lunch.
Excellent.
I thank you, C. Clark, and Room 214.
Thank you both, we appreciate it, thank you. Next, public comment. Members of the public are welcome to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Comments should be limited to two minutes in length. Due to the open meeting law, there will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. For items on the agenda, the chair may accept comments from the public following the committee's discussion of an item. Additional comments and feedback can also be submitted by email to schoolcommittee@falmouth.k12.ma.us. Do we have any public comments? And Megan, Megan Hanawalt, I see your name is up. We can promote her for public comment. Hi Megan. Okay.
Can you hear me?
I can, hi Megan.
Hi, hi everyone. It's been a while since I've been to one of these meetings, thank you for having me. I didn't know. So, okay, I would like to express my sadness that Falmouth DEI Officer Jackie Hartman resigned from her position after such a short period. You know, I'm confident that the community who voted for this position realizes that the job is a challenging one, to say the least. But I'm here today to ask the school committee about the plans to learn from the resignation of the town's first DEI officer. I'm wondering what are the plans, what plans there are to assess what went right, what went wrong, and what changes might be put in place for the next person in this role? And how can the community help in this effort? You know, the community wants and needs this position. The community wants and needs the person in this position to be successful. And, you know, my last comment is I would like to thank Jackie for serving in this role and helping to blaze a trail and meet the needs of the community. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Megan. And we will be, or the superintendent will be circling back briefly during her update related to the DEI work in our district. But thank you very much for your comments. Any other comments this evening? Okay, seeing none. Report on student advisory. We may have a personal logical issue, but we'll see. Okay, link, so. Would you, we don't, would we like to go to the update on the spring town meeting items while we're getting up?
Yes, we can do that till we get. Awesome, good. All right, so at the town meeting on April 4th, the budget that you voted and accepted, and FinCom also voted and is recommending the budget that you approved. There are no other items for the school on the town board for the spring.
Okay, that update was very, very quick, I'm sorry.
Do you like the calendar?
Yeah. The presentation is starting. Perfect timing, okay, thank you. So we will circle back to our report from student advisory, Anna.
Hi, thank you so much for having me.
Thank you for being here.
But the technical difficulties.
It happens.
All right, so I wanted to just talk to you a little bit about what it's been like at Falmouth High School since returning from February break without the mask mandate. Students are happy to be returning to some, a little bit of normalcy. We have lunch tables back in our cafeteria, and I feel like that's going really well. A lot of students are really happy to be able to socialize and sit with their friends. Some students and staff are opting to continue wearing masks, and we have distancing options available in classrooms and in the cafeterias that people are utilizing. And I feel like it's been overall a really positive environment, regardless of, you know, everyone's individual decisions. People have been really respectful and really supportive of other people and their wishes. I think we're all just happy to be doing our own thing and be able to decide, you know, what we want to do. And I'm also happy to be able to give you a couple non-COVID-related updates. Winter sports are winding down. Many of our athletes competed at least one round of the state tournament, and our girls hockey team is still competing. They have a game tomorrow night. Our school play, our school musical this year is going to be seussical, and preparations are in full swing. The show is not until May, but coming up soon, we have a, the Choral Theater Boosters program has hosting a cabaret night where FHS students will perform, and it's open to the community. Spring sports are starting up within the next couple of weeks. Trialts will be in about two weeks, I believe. And recently, we also had high participation at a successful science fair. And on top of everything, the seniors have a few events coming up. They're lucky, they're going to be able to have a senior semi-formal this year, which the last two years, unfortunately, seniors were not able to have. So they're very excited about that. And they also have their senior auction virtual fundraiser, which people put a lot of time and effort into coming up with and thinking outside the box to off-put some costs for the senior class for the rest of the year for their events. Um, I think that's all I have, so thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Any questions for Anna or comments? Excellent, yeah. Maybe not for Anna or Lori or whoever, what time's the game tomorrow? The hockey game? Please hold. We'll circle back. Thank you, Kelly. Yeah. Keep up. That sounds great. Anna, thank you as always for joining us. We so appreciate hearing from students, especially at the high schools, hear what's going on. And as soon as we find out the time of the hockey game. Right? What time?
5:20.
Okay, awesome. 5:20, okay. That's great. Anna, thank you so much, and have a wonderful evening, thank you, Anna.
Thank you for having me.
Next, presentation of charting the course for graduation. Dr. Dorr.
And I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Talia.
Thank you, and good evening. I'm just going to go ahead and set up to share my screen as I bring you through this evening's slideshow. It doesn't like it if I put it in presentation mode before I share my screen. All right. Here we go. All right, so can everybody see my screen okay?
Yes.
Excellent, thank you. So I wanted to have an opportunity to share with you a showcase of all of the work that's gone into building the Portrait of a Graduate, which we affectionately refer to as Charting the Course to Graduation, because as you'll see through the presentation, we've really worked hard to build off of our identity of what it means to be a Clipper and to help every student across our district, regardless of how they start, be it an Eagle, or a Dory, or a Mako, or a Tiger, that ultimately, we are all Clippers. And when students cross the stage and receive their diploma, they are in fact showing all of the learning that's gone into building themselves as Clippers. So what you see here is just a capture of something that's become very familiar and near and dear to all of us, and it's linked up on our website, but it's also showing on local cable television. And this is the "I am a Clipper" commercial that's been put together, but it's just a real great showcase as well, seeing our students from across the district in ways in which they engage in learning. I wasn't going to play, there we go. So in building out the Portrait of a Graduate or the Vision of the Graduate, we had to start first with anchoring ourselves in one particular undertaking. And this is a bit of foreshadowing for the team that's coming immediately after me and speaking to the high school's accreditation process. But we used some of the high school accreditation standards to launch our work. And so in that conversation, we had to make decisions about whether or not to go in the direction of building from the district's core values and beliefs about learning to create the profile, or having the profile, and then using that to lead into the beliefs about learning and core values. And on behalf of everyone who's contributed to this work, I'm very thankful for the start that we had with our school committee in reaffirming our core values and setting our beliefs about learning through our mission and vision and theory of action. And with that in place, once we had that flow, we were able to take the Portrait of a Graduate and the thinking around that so that we could articulate what it is we want our students to know and be able to do from the time that they begin with us, whether it's at age three or four in pre-K or age five in our kindergarten, or at any entry point along the way if they're coming into Falmouth up through their graduation. So where we are tonight, where we're really focusing in is on the green arrow and looking at that graduate profile, but then beginning to frame the thinking about where do we go from here as we start to measure our success with the vision. So as we've talked about just briefly so far, we've used the identity of what it means to be a Clipper in wanting to recognize and honor the history of our district as we prepare for the future of our district and where our students are headed. So we think a little bit, and we reflected on what a Clipper was, just in its own right. It was a very innovative vessel, designed to be among the fastest at the time and to serve its purpose. Significantly beautiful in its visual design, but also very focused in its purpose. And so we have this Clipper tradition that lives on and how we look at innovation, but also want to preserve a portion of our history. So we're always keeping a balance. And that is where we came up with the desire to use Clipper in setting our vision and not looking for another acronym or something different to layer into who we are as a district. So let's look here for a second at the why. We have this tradition of taking on efforts and undertakings and beginning slow and using that to build momentum to do something right. So here, in looking at the Portrait of a Graduate, we decided to take from what we already had. The Falmouth High School had skills rubrics for what it meant to be a reader, a writer, a problem solver. And we used those. And then we also looked at where our curriculum, where teaching and learning is taking us, how we want students to develop skills outside of the curriculum, like understanding who they are as learners, as collaborators, how they develop their capacity for creativity and resilience, and put that all together with anchoring it in both our mission and our vision. And the mission and vision of the district, as was read at the top of the meeting, includes a number of the words that are going to reappear in our Portrait of a Graduate. And again, just as a refresher, pulling forward the core values and the district's theory of action, which reminds us that each and every conversation we have is focused on what's best for our students and where our professional practice takes us in making sure that the teaching and learning for our students is relevant and preparing them for what's ahead. And then finally, just one other piece for consideration in developing this is building from our strategic plan and looking at our strategic objectives, be it in teaching and learning, access equity and opportunity, the development of our partnerships, but looking at how every single member of our school community, every single member of our staff is contributing to the Foundation for Excellence and has a role to play in supporting students in becoming successful graduates in their career with us. So building a little bit more off of that history, something I've already alluded to, we began with Falmouth High School's skills rubrics, which have been published in their program of studies and have been published online. And it was a way of looking at academic skills. And embedded within those academic skills were hints at some of the things that we wanted our students to be able to do socially, and some of the softer skills that come up in how we look at how they interact with each other and with people outside of the school community as they become more independent learners and prepare to be citizens within our community. So we took some of the language within this and started to frame out. If this is really what we're hoping our students can do by the time they graduate, then let's anchor that in what it means to be a Clipper. So we took each of the letters from Clipper and made a connection back into those skills rubrics that were really meant to show what our students can do by the time they graduate. And we created the "I am a Clipper" identity for our Portrait of a Graduate, with the C being creative, L for learner, and helping our students really understand how they learn best so that they can be successful and they can advocate for themselves. I for inquisitive, P for partner, first, understanding who I am and how I contribute to a classroom, to learning, and then how to be a participant and a collaborator, being an effective communicator, and ultimately being resilient. So we started out here, and this is when we weren't ready to make too many waves and do things too much differently than we had, because we wanted to do that first step of balancing our history and what we had. But we realized that what we had was limiting inasmuch as it was built by the Falmouth High School faculty and focused really on students' grades nine through 12, part of their educational journey. So we started to look at the broader vision for learning and really started to think about where our students are engaging in no-tech, low-tech, and high-tech options, how that was being used in the launch of our Maker Spaces, how it was connected to projects that students were engaged in in various grade levels up through culminating experiences in the high school. And as we were thinking about that, we wanted to start to link those experiences and create a network where our students could go to each other and know where to go to access new information, but that they were always flexibly thinking. They were ready to solve problems, realizing that they could access information in different places, but it's what they did to make sense of that information that was really influencing their learning. So this you've seen before, but as we were starting to create these modern learning environments and thinking about ways that we could signal to students that they had spaces where they could collaborate, we really had to shore up what we meant by teaching and learning and having instructional leadership to support and answer questions, continuously involved in the loop of making sure that all of the teaching and learning, our curricula, are relevant and organized. Sorry, I have a very sensitive keyboard. And that we also shorted the digital network. This was a piece of the journey that we had started on before we had the experience of COVID and the pandemic, but certainly, the resources that we were able to secure through that process helped to accelerate some of the growth in these areas. But as we were looking at all that and tying it together, we started to prepare for a launch of our Portrait of a Graduate and workshopping it with our colleagues to get feedback. So we had really started this process through a workshop sponsored by Niasq with a consultant, Abby Benedetto. And a number of different districts came together at the Niasq offices in October of 2019. And we took that information back to our instructional leadership. And when we went through the process of saying sort of pushback, you know, are these the right words that we're looking at? Are we making the right use of the skills rubrics? And this is something, you know, Mr. McMenamin, Ms. Gans could certainly speak to as well. They surveyed faculty. And that in that time, just prior to when our world pivoted for COVID, the first survey came back with a significant amount of support from the Falmouth High School faculty and building off of the work that they had started to really move us forward on this pre-K to 12 vision. So during that time, we wanted to continue to work with that. There were times where through social media, people are asked to share pictures of them, you know, being creative, when were they learning? How were they showing resilience and capturing pictures? But it wasn't necessarily a full workshop with getting student and family feedback at the time because of the nature of the interactions, and we were just getting comfortable with all of the tools and resources. So as we moved then into the 2021 school year, we returned back to IL, or our instructional leadership team, to say, let's dig a little deeper into each of these letters. What does it mean to be creative, to create a definition and ICANN statements to show what creativity is? So we picked up with that step, and then by March of 21, we started to engage in professional development, professional learning, to begin to look at how could we assess and measure the things we're talking about? Like, are we on the right course? And part of that was again, returning to the work with Niasq and our partner, Abby. And then by the fall of 21, the start of this year, when we started to realize that we needed more student involvement, the high school created a team of student ambassadors. And part of that was also connected to the accreditation visit, and that's where, you know, the synergy between this presentation and the next comes. Starting to look at how students were seeing the Portrait of a Graduate, getting their feedback for how we can make the document and the work very real and connected to their learning. So we continue, and we continue to receive feedback. And through the presentation tonight, while you helped us launch this journey in affirming the mission, vision, core values, and the theory of action, you're again becoming part of our feedback loop as we're looking deeper into the work and marking with you the progress that we've been able to achieve over the past couple of years despite the circumstances. On our website, we have a definition for each of our terms. And just to sort of summarize very simply in a single page or a single slide, the work. So it explains what it means to be creative, to be a learner, to be inquisitive. And that's followed by graduate-level ICANN statements, really trying to explain and have students put their voice into it. This is what they should be able to do by the time they graduate. But then to help trace the work backwards, we created a rubric that looks at what it means to begin with each of these skills at each grade level, to advance work, and to ultimately be proficient. And this is articulated at each grade level and connected to this single landing page, which is posted to our website. And one of the strategies that we were focused on, because we realized this is such a significant vision, is that we would put a spotlight on each year. So by that, kindergarten, pre-K, and K would look at just what it means to be creative, just talking to students about creativity and using the C. In first grade, just looking at the L, what does it mean to be a learner? How do students prefer to learn? And beginning to have conversations so that by the time we're coming up to grades seven and eight, students have had a focus here on each part of the vision and are able to start to put that together to help speak about the way that they learn best. So when we were talking about this, even though our initial work came from how we looked at learning with a really academic lens, we stepped back, because part of what we were trying to call out in here were some of the soft skills and some of the behaviors or dispositions we're hoping that students develop and support each other in the development of. And we made connections to our work around restorative practices, our work around cultural proficiency, and how the two of those together are a foundation that helps to bring about student success. And so really looking at the connection among those pieces and how all of it together is necessary in order to help our students meet the expectations that we've set for them. As alluded to in the course of the presentation, we have certainly learned from our mistakes. In trying to move through the spring of 20 and into the 2021 school year, we had certainly hoped to gather more feedback from students. And certainly, it would have benefited the high school ahead of their accreditation, their decennial visit. But we found ways through the student ambassadors to begin to have more input and have more voices as we go forward. So it felt almost as obvious when we put on our reflecting, right? Like, the ability to look backwards. Hindsight is always 2020, as easy as trying to find the two thus in the question, instead of looking at the numbers and trying to figure out if the colors were out of sequence, you know, with the color spectrum. And so as we got into that work and really focused on what happened, we were excited to have an opportunity to show students how we learn from our mistakes, engaging with them as ambassadors, but showing them, okay, we might have gone too fast in this one aspect, or thought that you understood it better. And the high school's gone through a couple of iterations of student surveys during Clipper time to continue to measure the impact of the work as we go forward. So just a really quick summary, again, we have the Clipper ambassadors. There's an assembly of a student advisory group at the high school. They are meeting and focusing in on the ICANN statements and making sure that they resonate with them as students and aren't just, you know, for us as educators or staff members to focus on. And they've looked at ways that they can continue to influence the thinking and educate their peers. So they've looked at Student Socratic seminars, continuing with polls, and recognition. And so I'm sure Mr. McMenamin, I see that you've just appeared there in the corner of my screen, but you get, I saw that thumbs up. You get to speak to this a little bit about the work you're doing, I'm sure, in your presentation around catching students living the Clipper life. So before we round out this presentation, I want to share a few visuals with you. So as you can see, you know, "I am a Clipper" is something that we've shared in a number of different arenas. This was the initial drawing from our professional development. And student artist Casey McGowan created a hand-drawn iteration, taking out some of the descriptors and really focusing on each of the letters. The high school, a shout out to our graphics team, Larissa Haar. They designed posters, these are all across the school. And I believe right now, our graphics team is in conversation with Lawrence School to create a Lawrence version of this poster that they're going to be putting up. Assistant Principal's office photo credit, Mr. McMenamin. They created these clings, and so they're helping to promote the vision, certainly at the high school. But here's another look. We have young elementary artists giving us renditions of what their interpretation of what it means to be a Clipper, as they're talking about the C for creative in that portrait, or the R for resilience. They're having conversations about what each of the parts of our vision mean and how they demonstrate that. And then they're giving us drawings to represent the conversation. Here's a couple of examples of where you may see it, in different areas outside of the classroom. Principal Moran, her t-shirt that the Mullen Hall Mako's wear on the front, once a Mako, on the back, always a Clipper, just building that out. And then on the right, Coach Lima, the field hockey team this year, on their team shirts, they proudly wore the display "I am a Clipper." It's influencing how teams come together in schools, how they organize themselves, and the stories that they share in their work. There are reminders that are being shared among school communities and faculties. But here's another look at how it's being connected back into our work around cultural proficiency. So making connections in this particular view is also tied really closely in what it means to be a partner, so the second P in Clipper. But Clippers welcome all countries of origin, languages spoken, include all races and ethnicities. They practice peacemaking. They partner with all in our community, embrace all abilities, and recognize the importance of relationships. And they added the S here, see differences as assets. So this is tied into what it means to be a partner and the ability to work with others. And this is a connection to our work and making that very explicit link to cultural proficiency. Other examples, this is an example from AP Statistics where students did an end of year reflection and how they see the parts of Clipper as they look back across their educational career in the district. And so in, in closing out the presentation and not meaning to go so fast through all of it, it's certainly a body of work and it's hard to capture a few years in, in just a few minutes. But some of our final thoughts is that we're really working to craft a vision of the graduate and really show what it means as our students develop over time at different ages and different grade levels. And it's been a meaningful exercise for us because we've taken the time to make those connections and balancing our history and preparing for our future. We've used what we already have and what we already do to show that our work is iterative and that it's focused on growth and not change. Student voice is essential. It's part of the relevance of our vision. Then we continue to embrace it and seek other ways to include more voices. And, you know, we're working to model exactly what we say and to learn from our mistakes. And so we've also wanted to include some of that here tonight to show you how. And so I just want to say thank you very much for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. I'm going to let go of the screen and I do appreciate your patience because it is a lot of information. But we're really excited about the work that we've been able to, to bring to you this evening. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much, Sonia. I'm sure there are many questions because that was a dense presentation. Any questions from school committee? Andrea?
Sonia, thanks for that presentation. And obviously a lot of work has gone into it. And I really like the thoughtfulness and, and the ability to include so many people into that. When the process was happening where you showed the nice Clipper ship with the sails and each of the letters, and all of those are really, really good meaty areas. And it's, I love how it was able to be tied in with all the letters from Clipper. I guess I was just wondering, was there anything that needed to be left out? Because it might not have fit into those categories, you know, kind of when you're doing that big broad thinking part of the process.
I see Mac there on the screen and Mac, you can weigh in. I don't think there's anything ultimately that was left out. But I think, for example, one of the things that we grappled with was, you know, the idea of problem solver. So Falmouth High School had a problem solver rubric. And we looked at it as a balance between creative solutions, students able to collaborate around the problem and then also being resilient, right? That if something didn't work, they came back to it again. So we found that while we may not have been explicit about naming problem solver, you know, we were willing to let go of Clipper when we were looking at the different dispositions that we wanted to highlight. But what we found is that they fit in different areas based on the, the letters we picked. So I can't think of anything that in particular that we had to dismiss from the work. I think it was just a matter of us seeing it fit, some of our, our thinking fit in multiple areas.
Yeah, because I guess, you know, I, thinking about it, like one of the, because you, as you were talking about the, a lot of these being soft skills. So emotional intelligence is a big area that is usually brought into the development of something like this. You know, what a graduate would look like. And I see resilience on ours, but I was wondering about some of the other aspects of that.
Yeah, and I think there's components of that that show up in the vertical alignment within resilience, even in some of the pieces around being a participant in a partner. May not be called out around EI specifically, like that, that phrasing for emotional intelligence. But there are nods to that. And so that was one of the pieces, right? Where I didn't take you into the rubrics for the sake of the time that we have here. And I would be happy to dig into that a little bit more if you would like me to share more information with you. And just kind of look at the progression over time and give you more, like, if you look at these ones in, in particular.
Thank you so much.
Sonia, I have a question for you, a few questions. You mentioned student ambassadors. Could you tell us how many student ambassadors there are?
So I know initially we started off with three. And I see Mac nodding, so I'm thinking the number hasn't gone up significantly. We started off with three and they're across different grade levels. And they actually joined us in a presentation to NEASC and they were applauded for their attention to the portrait and for helping to grow awareness among the, the student community.
Okay, so and, and I know that, you know, we are limited, we were limited by COVID. But what steps are you taking to make sure that students have a voice in this process? And that we're hearing from, you know, across the district, across the grade levels and multiple students? Could you walk us through that a little bit?
Sure, I see Tom, Tom's trying to, to give, to give you an answer specific to Falmouth High School and then I can weigh in from there.
Yep, for Falmouth High School specifically, one of the big, hi everybody, by the way. How are you? Great to see you all, you coming in a little early here. The, one of the big steps we took over the last few months was we started to leverage student government a little bit in this, which is wonderful because they have dedicated time during our half days already set up. And so Mike Feeney, who runs or doesn't, I, I wouldn't say he runs, the students run it. He's there as the advisor, brought some of those ICAN statements and really started fleshing out some of that discussion with them of how do you see this as a living, breathing thing for you in, in your school day? Is this accurate? Because I think a big part for us is making sure that if it's not an accurate depiction of what it means to be a Clipper or, you know, as Sonia said, even if we're going to erase the I am a Clipper thing, we, we need to make sure this is something that's actually happening in the schools. And so that's how the conversation started. Do you see this in your classrooms? And the feedback was wonderful, which I'm sure I can share back with Sonia to get back to any of you. If you'd like some of that, those initial pieces on the high school level.
Great, thank you.
And I think going beyond the high school, just the ability to even take the, the student ambassadors and have them speak with other grades, younger grades, the schools that are leading up to. And then we've also had, as you can see in the drawings, just classroom-based conversations where students are giving us their reflections, their imagery and their thinking as we continue to refine the, the vision.
And then, and then part two, then I'll go to Bill. And then also a similar question in terms of staff engagement. Can you speak to how you're engaging the staff, not only at the high school, but also in the, the other buildings as well?
Sure, so one of the examples that I had shared with you where you saw the, the acrylic picture frames and each letter was in one of the frames. That's one example of where a faculty's been grouped by each of the letters. And so one of the, the things that they've done is, is really unpack the ICAN statements within the letter and be able to bring that back in their school community and share examples. And at one point they'd created a poster display. And then they're using that to kind of keep the conversations going with students. So that's one example. Other examples are where it's been connected to the learning and schools are modeling the playlists and using it to share weekly or updated communications and then making connections and showing pieces of I am a Clipper and connecting it to the work in the school. Each of the initiatives or undertakings in which they're engaged.
Thank you. Bill, writer?
Yes, a question on the surveys, the student surveys. Can you just elaborate on that a little bit? Because that kind of caught me. I think that's good to have that totality of involvement, which I think you have in this. But just a little reflection on this, the student surveys.
So one of the very first surveys gone through the high school was just could the students identify that, what the C was for? You know, was it for creative? Was it for curiosity? So they went through and just made a measure of it, the students could identify each of the letters to the disposition that it was meant to identify. That was the first broad sweep. And then as they continued to do the work, I know they're getting ready for another round. So I don't know, Tom, if you would like to add in what the next round's meant to measure?
Yeah, so we have not only, we're, we're going to reassess on the straight identification piece because as Sonia said in the presentation, we were starting to discuss the idea of assessment of the, the vision overall, that we're supposed to have some measurement for students of how they're doing on these skills and dispositions. We said, well, let's just take a good teaching, formative assessment, dipstick, see where they are. And we found out in some areas they were really strong and in some we needed to get the word out a little more. So we're going to go back to that identification piece to reassess where we are. And then we have sort of an application survey where we have scenarios in the survey and the students have to identify which of the letters they think or which of the components best applies to the scenario to see if they can really apply the meaning to those letters and not just rote memorization.
Terry, so when you were discussing who these students are, there were three ambassadors and then there was people in student government, correct? So if, if I went walking down the halls of the high school and just asked the man on the street, would I get the same kind of responses that these groups got, do you think?
That's a great question, Terry. That was, and this is going to start bleeding into the, the NEASC presentation, but they do kind of go hand in hand. It was part of the NEASC group, the, the visiting team's task to see if students understood the, the vision of the graduate and the meaning. And they were really, really honest and very complimentary in that regard. And they said, they met with individual student groups of, you know, varying, from, from widely different groups around the school. Not just, like you're saying, not just a student government member or maybe a, a student ambassador or something like that, but members from all over the school. And they said, you know, even the students who maybe didn't understand every single letter really got the meaning of what it is to be a Clipper. And honestly, that's more important for me. You know, i- it doesn't matter if they memorize every single letter, but if they can tell me the meaning of it, I, I think that's the win right there. So I, I think we're on the right road there, but we're definitely, I'm still working very closely with the faculty members who were part of that original planning group, the, the NEASC group we went to. And we're talking about those next steps of, and we're very lucky to have a, a couple math teachers with us who are talking about statistical analysis of the groups that we're choosing to make sure we're really getting an accurate measure of where the entire student body is. But I think it's going to be getting those seminar groups together for discussions with small groups, small teams of students. And, you know, doing that over and over and over again with different groups to see if we are where we think we are, where we need to grow and do better. It's never going to be a perfect process and that's fine with me as well. We can reflect and keep doing better.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for this presentation on charting the course of the graduate. We appreciate it. And I'm sure you're sticking around for the next presentation on the NEASC report.
Mr. McManamin?
Okay, so that's me, right? That's me again.
That is you, thank you.
Hi, everybody, I'm Tom McManaman, the principal of Falmouth High School. We're here. So you should see, does everyone see my screen right now?
Oh, we see a line down the middle. We had a slide, but it went away.
You don't see NEASC Decennial Visit in front of you? No?
You may need to take it out of presentation mode and just mirror the screen. It might be very.
There it is.
Oh, you got it now? Okay, I see what happened here. I have two monitors, so I won't be looking at you on this slide, on the, on the camera. I'm not being rude, I promise. So I'm here to talk about the, the NEASC Decennial Visit that just happened at Falmouth High School this fall from October 3rd to October 6th. NEASC, as, as I believe most of you know, but for those who don't, is the group that gives every high school its accreditation. So the Decennial Visit is something that happens every 10 years. NEASC has revised their process substantially since the last time they visited. And so I'm going to just speak a little bit about that this evening. So the, the visiting team that came to us this year was composed of teachers, administrators and some retired administrators from really around New England, mostly around the state. Our two chairs were Dr. Pamela Gould, who is the superintendent of Sandwich Public Schools. And then the assistant chair was Dr. Maureen Sabalinski, who is a retired superintendent as well. We also had several other members of the visiting team, a teacher from Groton Dunstable, a world language teacher from Duxbury, the superintendent of Acton Boxborough, an English teacher from Nantucket, who we were lucky to have because she was also part of the visit that took place a few years ago, which I'll talk more about in a minute. That was part of this revised process. And then the assistant principal from Belmont High School as well. On our end, the, we were tasked first with appointing a steering committee who would help organize the process on the Falmouth High School side. And so along with me, we had Tricia Borja, a math teacher, Mike Feeney, our social studies department head, Mary Gans, the former principal and now district administrator, Heather Goodwin, the science teacher, Courtney Lima and Kate McCauley, two math teachers, myself again, and then Henry St. Julian, assistant principal as well. So it might seem like a small group, but it is important for you to know that all faculty and staff were involved in this accreditation process. NEASC is, they do require that we have a steering committee that's comprised of three to eight faculty members to oversee the whole process. So this is a volunteer committee. This was a lot of extra time for these members of our faculty. And we really, really couldn't have done it without them. But again, I want to stress, especially in regards to that collaborative conference, which I'll talk about in a minute, every single member of our faculty and staff was involved in the self-reflection that we went through. So like all other high schools, Falmouth High School is accredited by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is NEASC. And they, they do operate, as I said earlier, on a 10-year cycle. The last time we went through this full accreditation cycle was in 2010. So we were pushed out a year due to the pandemic for this final decennial visit. A big part of the revision of the process and protocols that NEASC went through was they actually added a, a preliminary visit. They called it a collaborative conference. And so the bulk of the reflection work really takes place before that collaborative conference, which for us was April 25th and 26th, 2019. Leading up to that visit, we went through an extensive self-study, measuring ourselves against standards that NEASC publishes and has descriptors for each. And we had to go through and measure where we thought we were on each standard, supply evidence for the reason, the rationale behind that, and then write a report detailing where we thought we were and the evidence and examples that led us to believe where we were. So again, as I said, we prepared that self-reflection report. And then we had to identify through that priority areas of growth ourselves. And so Falmouth High School, the, the team, everyone identified four areas where we thought we could do a little more leading up to that decennial visit and beyond. NEASC is really focused on, from the collaborative conference to the decennial visit, you don't need to finish and complete all these goals. You need to be on the road to starting them. And then the rest of your work is over the next 10 years until your next visit. So we had identified four priority areas for growth leading up to the collaborative conference. The collaborative conference took place and the NEASC visiting team from 2019 identified one additional goal for us. So here are the goals we had identified from our collaborative conference. The first was that we wanted to revise and refine that vision of a graduate that Sonia just summarized for you. We wanted to complete UBD units for all our courses. These are understanding by design curriculum units. And it was really an effort to make sure we were streamlining our curriculum process that we, everything from each department looked the same, but also so that we knew if we have new staff, they can walk in, they have an idea of what it means to be a teacher in that department, what happens in those courses, the skills and standards that need to be tackled in them, while also giving them some flexibility and autonomy and also allowing for some student choice and voice as a part of that. One of the big priority areas that we identified was that we wanted to identify and address gaps in student learning among particular, particular subgroups through intervention and programming. That was a pretty lofty goal for us and, but one I feel like we made a lot of great headway on and are continuing to make some headway on. Number four is we wanted to continue the implementation of Alice protocols for lockdowns and emergencies. And then number five, this is the one that the visiting team from that collaborative conference had identified. They asked us to ensure that instructional practices within all classrooms are designed to meet the learning needs of each student, including differentiation, grouping, and tiered intervention strategies. They, when they presented that to us, said, you might think this They, when they presented that to us, said, you might think this looks a lot like the goal number three that you identified. And we said, we do. And they said, we really wanted to just parse out that instruction piece. So we really want you, you're doing great work by saying you want to identify the the gaps in student learning. We also want you to look at this instructional piece. So we added that in as well. So following the collaborative conference report, schools are required to develop a school growth plan, which tracks their work on the priority areas for growth. In preparation for the decennial visit, schools are required to draft a school summary report, which summarizes the progress we've made on the priority areas. And again, I can't say it enough, everyone at Falmouth High School worked extremely hard to make sure we were on track with this progress. And that's despite being significantly interrupted by COVID. We nevertheless made extremely successful strides in all areas. And I would honestly argue that some of those strides maybe wouldn't have been possible without the the place the pandemic put us in. So leading up to this fall's decennial visit, it was a hybrid visit. It was both in-person and remote. Dr. Gould, again, the superintendent of Sandwich Schools, did come to Falmouth High, which was wonderful to have her there. We could, anytime there was a question that was coming from her team, she could come and knock on the door. She was visiting classrooms in person. But then also, along with that, all team members participated virtually. We put together a schedule for the visiting team of every single class at Falmouth High School with a Zoom link. Teachers did a wonderful job and were very flexible in understanding in setting up those web cameras again and and zooming all day for the days that the the NIESC visitors were there. So they could pop into classrooms for a few minutes, leave and just get a flavor for what it's like to be a student in Falmouth High School. So the job of the visiting team was to review our school growth report, our school summary report, and all the supporting evidence we provided. They met with many groups and committees, including the steering committee, teachers, school administrators, it's not in here, but as I said earlier, students and district administrators. And that's because it's in the next bullet. They did meet with students. They observed classrooms and they also reviewed lesson plans and student work, which is a lot of work over just, you know, three or four days. At the conclusion of the decennial visit, a decennial visit report is issued, which summarizes the visit and includes ratings on the NIESC foundational elements. So what I'm going to do now is move into a summary of those key findings from the decennial visit and the ratings FHS earned on the foundational elements. The visiting team was extremely impressed by the strong relationships that were evident between students and staff, by how students made it clear in their interviews that they have an adult they can turn to if and when they need to, and by the school's commitment to cultural proficiency and restorative practices. I will tell you, if that was the only positive thing they had written in the whole report and everything else were things we needed to work on, I would have called it a win. That is, what a glowing commendation for our teachers, for our staff. It was really unbelievable to hear that. Clipper Time was praised repeatedly for the overall help and support it provides to students and how it allows for directed interventions that are tiered and otherwise. FHS was praised for the range of supports and programs to support students' academic, vocational and social emotional learning. The Bridge Program was particularly highlighted for the support it provides for the at-risk student population it serves. And our curriculum units were praised and will continue on as living documents. Furthermore, courses within the CVTE programs, our vocational programs, were given high praise for their commitment to personalized, authentic and project-based learning. The vision of the graduate was given high praise as well, while acknowledging the next steps we know we must take to roll it out and fully implement it. And this was one of those things, as Sonya pointed out, we wrote right in our report, due to the break the pandemic put on everything, we really wish we could have gotten more student voice initially in that, and we are working towards that now. And they agreed with us, which was great. I will add to that, however, though, that in December of this year, we had a group present to the NIESC Annual Conference and Showcase. And Allison Geary, who is the NIESC Associate Director of the Committee of the Committee on Public and Secondary Schools, said that at this time she felt that we were one of the model schools for this work in terms of the vision of the graduate, which was very complimentary coming from Allison. Classroom instruction was likewise given high praise, while acknowledging that some instruction needs to be less lecture-based and more interactive and data-driven, and that further professional development focused on differentiation and co-teaching would be beneficial. Again, things we know is as we move and grow in these directions. So that didn't necessarily come as a surprise with a little bit of, you know, feedback there of what we could keep working on. And I think we all agree with it. FHS was also noted to be incredibly clean, well-maintained and safe. And we will continue to implement a schedule to train students and staff with respect to Alice's safety protocols. So this table that you see in front of you now lists in the very left-hand column what the foundational elements are. In the next column, you see where we had rated ourselves on the on those foundational elements. So this was, you see in, for example, number 2.2A, which is the written curriculum in a consistent format for all courses in all departments under student learning. We knew we weren't quite there on those understanding by design curricular units yet. And so we said we didn't meet the standard. The next column is the collaborative conference team's rating for us. So where they agreed with our ratings or maybe disagreed, as we saw in the vision of the graduate, for instance, the 1.2A was the vision of the graduate. The next column is the school's rating on all the standards. So what we thought, where we thought we were this year. And so we thought we had met everything. And the good news was the visiting team agreed. You see that last column, the decennial visitors rating, they did agree that we had met all those foundational elements. So where are we now? Currently, FHS is currently fully accredited by NIESC. We are very pleased with the results of the decennial visit and we fully expect to maintain that accredited status. The official stamp of accreditation is expected in March or April of this year. So we're just waiting that, but we are very pleased with these results. So with that, I will stop sharing. And if you have any questions for me, I can take.
That was great. Any questions?
It's so much, it's not really a question, but it's just so much work. Like it's just the both pieces of the portrait and the NIESC stuff, like it's just, it's just unbelievable amount of work that goes into it.
Thank you.
Kelly, I I responded to that by saying I can't say enough about the faculty and staff at Falmouth High School and all the work that they put into it. You're absolutely right. It's a lot of heavy lifting. And it's nothing that I could have done or Mary could have done on our own. It's the work they're doing every day is the the great news here. And it's that reflection piece that's so important that NIESC asks us all to say, what do we think we can do better to to grow and be the best possible school for our kids?
It wasn't for that, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
If it wasn't for that piece, I would find the process incredibly frustrating, but it requires so much reflection and planning for the future that good things come of it, which makes it worthwhile, thankfully. So you're not doing, you know, it's not just a box checking experience.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Terry. And one thing I think maybe would attest to the honesty of the answers and things that they use is that they don't tell you what they're going to ask you. Because Lisa and I were interviewed, one of the groups who was interviewed, and like I think I might have asked Lori, well, what are they going to ask us? You have no idea. It's just, you know, off the cuff and you have to think, you know, you don't have time to make anything up, in other words, not that people are, that's their nature, but it's, it's, yeah.
It's a lot of work.
It's a lot of work.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you both for being here. This is wonderful presentation and we appreciate the update. So have a great night.
Have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the first read. I can't believe I'm saying this, of the 2023-2024 school calendar. It is in our packet, Lori.
Thank you. So I think things are back to normal. When we look at this calendar, the start of first school day for students is September 5th. Every, the three days before, the week before for teachers, all the holiday breaks are the same. And we're scheduled to be out on June 17th. You'll notice that the five days for weather-related closures actually ends up being on the Tuesday, the following Tuesday, because the 19th would then become a holiday. So that if all goes well, we'll be out on the the 17th. I don't think there's anything. I know there's nothing unusual about the calendar. It's all the typical, so nothing's really changed based on the calendar.
Any, Kelly?
No worries. So I just wanted to bring up, I can't remember if it was an email or if it was in the survey that Communications Group did, or just where it was, but there was a comment from family, from a family about, at least at least talking about the placement of early release days. And I know we have to do that really, really far in advance because it's something that we talk about with the union, about where they're going to be placed and when they're going to occur, how many there are. So is that something that, I imagine that there was a reason that we always do them on Tuesdays. Is that something that we?
It's contractual. So it's early release Tuesdays days. Nothing's changed on this calendar. It's been the same since I've been here and I'm going to guess long before I've been here. You know, basically, you know, we try to get in a professional development, you know, half-day for that early, once a month, although there is not one in April. But other than that, that's the the goal of trying to do.
I guess I just, I always hesitate to to just do things because that's how we've done them, you know? If we should think about moving to a different schedule, I know we have to do it really far in advance. So I'm just, just throwing it out there that we we've heard that from families and maybe I don't know, if nothing else, maybe knowing way back when, why we do it on Tuesday, there was probably an original reason.
So I guess I'm wondering about the question, is it the the professional development, the early release time, or is it that it's a Tuesday?
I think that's
I think it's a Tuesday was the question that was
opposed to a
Friday and Monday.
I feel like as if I can jump in here, Kelly, as a parent, it's hard to, like, you know, you you get them back to school Monday, everything's great. And then, oh, early release day again, like this, these were the thoughts that I myself had last night with my, in my own home. So I I think that that was part of the spirit of the email that we received from the family, that, you know, you, it's, we understand that there has to be half-days for professional development and, you know, we, 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 the community, the parents understand that. But, and I understand from the administration side that it's contractual, but perhaps we could have a conversation during negotiations to maybe move it to another day of the week.
If that would be what's best, you know, I
Just a conversation, just, yeah.
I don't know what's best for, I'm not going to pretend to know what's best for teachers and P D development planning or
Sure.
or even what's best, you know, what would be best for kids? Is it harder for them because it's Tuesday? I don't know. I just want to make sure that we're thoughtful about it and we don't just keep doing things. Because that's how we've done it before. We definitely want to make sure we have plenty of time and schedule for professional development.
Right.
It's just a matter of, I think, how we do that. Or maybe even just looking at other districts, how they manage it, what works well for them. I don't, I don't know. I don't really know. I'm voting with it. It's just because it's the first read. I feel like it's the opportunity to start talking about those things before we get to the point of approving it. And I know, you know, I'm so grateful that we plan our calendar so far in advance now. It's such an incredible difference for families to be able you know, look more than a year out. So if we're going to talk about changing it, I want to make sure we have enough time to do that.
So Sonya, would you like to add anything about, I mean, you may have the historical knowledge as to why Tuesdays were picked? Give us a little insight if you have it.
It's been such a long time.
Yeah, it's a structure that I came into over 20 years ago, but one of the things I do know that it's in part connected with is the way that evenings are also designated in the way that Tuesdays, I know the early release and professional development, but then also meeting schedules for faculty, staff, department meetings. And then school committee, it seems like Tuesdays are the meetings all the way through, where Mondays have a designated night for certain grades, Wednesdays and Thursdays. Not that it can't be changed, but I think all of those parts are included in the inherent structure.
All interconnected. Sure. That makes sense. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Thanks.
Andrea.
Maybe while we had Sonya filling us in, because as we were having that, the the conversation that Kelly started, it made me start thinking about the understanding, the benefit of a half-day versus a full day. So the multiple half-days versus a longer chunk of time that would be specifically dedicated for professional development.
I think there are wins and challenges on both sides. The way that the half-days are configured, both because of the time on learning, the amount of the day that's used. They count as days within the 180 school days. If you shift and you add full days of professional development, they add days in the contractual work year and they don't count towards 180 days. So they elongate the time between the first day of school and the last day. But then on the other side, when you have staggered dismissals for bringing faculty and staff together versus everyone available at the same time. So there are definitely wins and challenges on both sides.
Any other questions or comments? That's really helpful. Thank you. Thank you. Again, this is our first read of the 2023-2024 calendar and we will vote on it at our next meeting. Next is ACT on National Art Honor Society Field Trip to New York City Museums, Lori.
Yes, thank you. We have Jane Baker with us tonight. If we could promote Jane, she wants to, I believe, share a little bit about the the trip.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Sorry, I was, I was, I was lost in a spiral. So, so Lori, your words went blank for about a second. So do you want me to present the the trip?
Yes, please. You'll be able to. Best. Thanks, Jane.
So the Art Honor Society is a group of, I think we have about 65 members right now. And ever since about 2005, I've been taking the kids to New York City and we alternate between the Met, the MoMA, different places. We obviously did not go the last couple of years. We had started to plan the trip in March of 2020 and then, and then we didn't. So in any case, it's Mrs. Adams and myself who run the Art Honor Society. And for this trip this year, what we're hoping to do is to take the kids down to Chelsea, which is an area of the city which has about 200 galleries in it. So we have, we are going to be planning to take about 48 or 50 kids, five chaperones. Each chaperone is responsible for 10 kids. And in Chelsea, we'd go in the chaperone groups. And then after a period of time, get some lunch, hop on the subway up to either Columbus Circle or one of the other stations, walk across Central Park and then end up at the Met where we would have reserved tickets for the Met. And then the kids would explore the Met for about three hours and then we leave there, get some lunch, or sorry, get some dinner in the area, get back on the bus. So we typically leave Falmouth High School at about six o'clock in the morning and the trip takes about four and a half, five hours, depending on traffic. And, yeah, the original trips, I used to have them drop us off in Brooklyn and we walk over the bridge and the and the buses would drop us off and pick us up a number of different times. But with the current bus regulations, we, we can't do that. We have to give the drivers like an eight-hour break. And so, and we have to have two drivers now. So we had to lengthen the time between being on the bus. So that is why we need to get creative and get dropped off in one place and then get picked up much later. I think that's about it.
Thank you. Any questions for Jane? Is there a motion? I'll make a motion.
No. And now second, whatever.
What is your full motion?
I was just going to say, I'll make a motion to approve the field trip request for the National Honor Society annual trip to New York City museums.
And Terry, you're second? Okay, great. So any follow-up questions or comments? Oh, that was crazy. And hi, Leah, I see you. So seeing none, it'll be a roll call vote. Leah, we will start with you.
Yes. Well, yes.
Jerry Medias, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes.
And Natalie Kanopoulos, also, yes. Have a wonderful trip.
Have some fun.
Amazing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Field trip related question?
No, do it right now.
Okay. So I mean, it it's so amazing that our society stays to go on this trip. And I'm sure I'm not the only one, including those on the air ball from BAN Parents. after the banned field trip was canceled this year. I think it was canceled right in the middle of Omicron, which I, you know, I can understand when things were so terrible. But I'm wondering if there's any word on them picking it back up and rescheduling it. And, you know, because the kids, this is like the highlight of the beating ban all through high school. Can we encourage them to to pick it back up and plan it?
So Dr. Taya, do you want to address the banned trip and the reasons for canceling and why it would be hard to reschedule?
Yes, I I know it was unfortunate timing that the way that the cancellation and reimbursement plan where that was set up was in the midst of the significant surge and to see how our world changed so dramatically in two months. Planning for those trips takes about a year. So any of the reservations that have to happen in particular for the shows and competitions, they register for well in advance. So it's not common that there would be a place for them to jump into now. And in all likelihood, their space was taken the minute they they let it go. I was trying to understand the same thing and just put it all together. And it was about the timing.
It's just so unfortunate. I like, I just, I really feel for for our high schools, well, for all the kids, but you know, they've lost so many things. They had prom and the dead cold of like November and, you know, like they're it's just unfortunate they can't find a way to do something.
I agree. Thank you, Kelly, for sharing that. Next on our agenda is Act on Book Donation. Sonia.
Thank you. We had a a member of our greater community reach out and offer to share 50 copies. The story was originally written by his mom. He published it in Memory of His Mom. And he's offering 50 copies of the book for us to use. He'd like us to share it with our multilingual students and their families. We can share it more broadly if we would like to. There are a couple other school districts that he's made a similar donation to. And I do know that Eight Cousins also carries the book. But it was just an unexpected and pleasant offer one afternoon here in the office. And so we would like to be able to accept this gift from our donor.
Great, thank you. Is there a motion related to the book donation?
I'll make a motion to accept the book donation.
And Terry is
I might as well second it. A lot of role.
Any questions? Andrea. Yes, Sonia, I was wondering, is there a process for vetting books like this that are being donated by an author?
Yes, I did share it with Christine Nicholson, who is our English Language Department, Department Head or English Language Team Department Head. And we've had a number of other people just take a review of it. It was only given to us in a digital Read Aloud form, not in the book form for preview.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing that is going to be a roll call vote. Leah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Well, yes.
Jerry Medias, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrew Thorne, yes.
And Natalie Canoplas also, yes. So thank you, Mr. Clyde Haycom. I hope I said that correctly for your donation of the books. Next, Act on Falmouth High School Library Surplus Bookshelves and Display Case.
So first, if you'll look in the the background of Dr. Taya's office, you can see many of the library bookshelves. First thing that we did and I'll, I'm going to let Dr. Taya take over here in a minute. But you can see the bookshelves over here and the Falmouth High School wants to reconfigure the space. And so we first asked if anyone would like to have a bookshelf or multiple bookshelves in the district first to repurpose them within our schools. But we still have bookshelves left over. So Dr. Taya, what are we going to do with our bookshelves?
Yes, we are hoping that by declaring them surplus, there's an opportunity for members of other town departments to be able to have first opportunity to take these bookshelves if they'd like to. It's been part of a multi-year planning process, as Dr. Dora said, to be able to create collaborative learning spaces as the shift from a near exclusively paper collection has shifted to more digital resources. The the shelving is no longer necessary in the volume we have.
Yeah, that stinks.
Yeah, that's not reading. Okay, thank you there for that, Sonia. Is there a motion to act on the Falmouth High School Library surplus bookshelves and display case?
I'll make a motion.
Great.
Second.
Second. Any questions? Andrea. So Sonia, there was a lot of groaning here about the the loss of books, which I agree with. But I guess I was wondering what actually happens to the the physical copies of the books that we did have. So those, all those shelves had things on them.
Yes, a good number of the shelves, they did, some of them were actually collections of older yearbooks, magazines and publications that had been amassed. And some of them were books. And depending on the copyright age and condition of the books, some of them had to be discarded and some of them were made available for faculty or staff to move into classroom libraries. So it's it's an annual vetting process and over time, they weren't replaced in a in a one to one match.
Okay, thank you.
Melissa, can I just assume that all the copies of the yearbooks that we have are still here? Like, I'm just thinking about like someone in the class of like seventy five shows up and that's all.
Yep.
No, I didn't. Thanks, Ryan. I just, you know, if somebody shows up from the class of whatever and hey, do you have a yearbook?
They're still there.
Here's my twenty dollars.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, it's a roll call vote on acting on the surplus bookshelves. Leah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Well, yes.
Jerry Medias, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrew Thorne, yes.
Brighter, yes.
And Natalie Canoplas also, yes. Thank you for that. Next on our agenda, update from superintendent.
Thank you. I'm going to start with the just the COVID update. We, as you know, we started last week without with mask optional. We, I think the word of the week or words of the week or phrase of the week is pure joy. So there was just a lot of positive energy across the schools. There are the majority of students that are have chosen not to wear masks. We have about between five and 10% of our students that are still choosing to wear a mask. The week before winter vacation, we had 14 positive cases. The week during vacation week, we had five cases. And the week of the week right after winter break, when we started the mask optional, we had five cases as well. No case in school cases. And the last time we've had an in-school case was January 20. So seems to be going well this week. We looked at attendance to see if we had any. The attendance dropped last week. And in fact, it went up a couple percent, but we're hanging around, you know, 93% last week. And it's usually between 91, 93, 94. So we're, attendance still looks good. We continue to supply the test kits to staff and students that have opted into the program. Some parents have now chosen not not to participate and others actually have picked up and are participating. So that things seem to be going well. And so and Anna, our student liaison, shared that each school does have options for like lunchroom. There are separate desks as if they're more comfortable to do that. So they're placed around the cafeteria, but they also could choose to be at the tables. And so we're just, we're trying to be as thoughtful as possible as we were making the transition. I don't know if anyone has any questions about that before I move on, but since that seems to be a little bit different than the other. Yeah, we go. Okay. All right, great. As it was stated here tonight, Jackie Hartman has resigned her position, as you know. Just Dr. Sayana Moisey and Mr. George Spivey are both under contract to provide DEI services through the end of this school year. It's important that that everyone knows is that the work is important to us and that the work will continue. Dr. Moisey is mainly focused on working with staff. And Mr. Spivey is mostly working directly with students. And so they're dividing up a lot of the work, as I said. Mr. Spivey has agreed to a contract with the town as of yesterday as the acting DEI officer with the town and schools. In addition, we're extending Dr. Curtis Bates' contract for the rest of the school, providing continued professional development with restorative practices. Dr. Cleese Warnham is has already been scheduled for a second session session on cultural proficiency in May. In addition to our contractors, all the work our internal staff is providing, like the cultural proficiency courses offered by Henry St. Julian and Derek Zar and the student groups like our Clippers for Racial and Social Justice or ARC, all continuing. And so I just want to, again, reiterate that we want the work to continue and we found some ways to help the school take that through this end of the year. I say the end of the year because I do believe Falmouth Public Schools we would value and it would be important if we could have more than a point five position. I think that that there's so much work that we have committed to and that we are in the middle of that we want to see happen. I would like to see Falmouth Public Schools has have one full-time person just for the schools. So as I recommend that, I'm going to be presenting a job description for the committee to review at our next meeting on March 22. At the first April meeting, I'm hoping that there'll be action taken and then immediately after posted and hope that we have someone starting on July 1. And I'll just stop.
Kelly.
I've been talking a lot.
Okay, Terry, sorry.
I've been talking a lot too, but I just want to say we are so lucky to have Mr. Spivey. I mean, he's like a legend in this town. So we're really lucky.
Absolutely. Kelly.
I'm I was just going to say that, you know, I'm really glad that you found so many, you know, out of the box ways to keep the work moving until we can get somebody else on board and and I crowd it. It'll come to me. Sorry.
Okay, Melissa.
Couple things. Welcome back, Mr. Spivey. I'm super excited about that. I I want to kind of come back to during our what's a Clipper and, sorry, forgive me, learning from our mistakes. And I don't want to say that we having a halftime position was a mistake. But I think learning from that experience, we learned as a district that we need more than a halftime position, that we need a full-time, you know, position. So if we can look at a positive in there, that would be, you know, looking for a positive and that's it. So welcome back, Mr. Spivey. I'm super excited. And I appreciate the the district's need for recognizing the full-time position and Dr. Dora's what am I trying to say, speed in putting something together. So thank you very much.
Any other question related to that?
Yeah, I'm just anxious to look at the job description because it's going to focus on the school district itself rather than the community and the school district. So I think that's imperative that we get that ASAP and get an opportunity to look at as a group.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yes, Kelly.
It was related to the job description. Thanks, Bill. So, you know, we have, we, there was a lot of community input that went into creating the first one. And so we have, you know, some good starting point. But like Melissa just said about, you know, that point where they where the high school realized that they didn't have enough student input. If we can, I know we're on sort of a short timeline, but if we can make sure that people who had the opportunity to do DEI work over the last six months or are connected to it or student voice, we have the opportunity to try and gather some additional information to include in the pieces of the job description. So we can really be sure that it's exactly the work that, you know, that we know we want.
Right. Great idea. Thank you.
And that's a great suggestion, Kelly, and we can certainly do that over the next couple of weeks.
Great. Anything else?
Yes, I do have a few other things. All right. At East Falmouth, many people probably heard about Ride the Trake opportunities where the staff and students were tag teaming in some competition and all the students getting to watch. I was able to watch both events. And I have to tell you, there was just so much joy. The kids just really loved it. It was fun. It was motivating. And I just wanted to kind of point that out that that was something new this year for East Falmouth and staff and students had a good time. This week is the fourth grade curling competition among all four elementary schools. This is something that we started a few years ago. But because of COVID, we had to stop the competition where the the elementary schools get together. But we're back at it. The students are very excited and I look forward to watching the competition. The with FinCon members, Patrick Murphy and I joined them in a tour of the upper Cape. And then there the funding structure was explained. They provided lunch for us. It was a very nice event. I just, you know, again, thank you to the upper Cape tech, but also to Sue Smith that arranged it and thought that would be great for FinCon members. The Falmouth representatives that serve on the school committee for upper Cape tech. We were all together and it was actually some really good discussion. So I appreciate that. Troy Clarkson delivered a $2,000 check last week for the use of the carousel on the Mullen Hall Playground. And we'll be coming back at one of the future meetings soon to, again, ask the school committee if they can use the Mullen Hall Playground for this coming summer. The 44th Annual Science Fair was this past weekend was a huge success. Stacy Strong was our new coordinator this year and with the help from Sarah Vendetti, lot of, a lot of work. It's a lot of work to put it together, but they did a fabulous job. And they put their own flair to a few, a few, few new touches of the Science Fair and it went very well. I, the flyer is included in your packet. So but what I'd like to do is actually read our partners that made donations toward the scholarships. We had Woods Hole Sea Program, Notice Clean Energy, Eight Cousins Bookstore, A CERN STEM Innovation, Salt Pond Area Bird Sanctuaries, Woodwell Climate Research Center, the Falmouth Water Stewards, Sea Education Association, the Marine Biology Biological Laboratory, NBL, and then Woods Hole Oceanographic Institute. So who we all provided financial scholarships for our students. So I just wanted to call out and thank, thank our partners for participating. We had many of our Woods Hole partners that had tables set up. Many of our Woods Hole partners were judges during the event. And it was just a lot of positive energy. The young students were very excited about the projects that they had developed as well. So good event. Kindergarten registration began on February 28. As of Friday, we had 15 registered at East Falmouth, 27 registered at North Falmouth, 26 registered at T Ticket and 29 at Mullen Hall. twenty-six registered at T Ticket and twenty-nine at Mullen Hall. We just really encourage all families to register as soon as possible. It really helps us in our planning and for staffing. So if you have any questions, you can contact the administration building. The the Department of Student Services would be happy to to help with that. And thanks to Anna, she kinda gave the update on our sports. We're very proud of our girls ice hockey team as they move forward. The March performance at Lawrence is Beauty and the Beast musical. There are forty-five students that are involved, including cast members backstage crew, designers, painters, photographers, the audio lighting and set movers, but it's a it's a big crew and it's very exciting. We have that many students. The performances are March twenty-six at two and seven and March twenty-seven, twenty-seventh at two. We all bands night is March sixteenth at Falmouth High School and all coral night is March twenty-third at Lawrence. And it is such pleasure to say that, that we're able to do that and be back in person. I feel like I'm saying that a lot. We're able to do this again after two years. So that's very exciting. And finally, we had a excellent professional development session today with McLean Hospital, supporting transgender and non-binary students. And I'm gonna let Joan Woodward, since she's arranged it, I want her to be the one to get to share a little bit about it. And that will be our conclusion.
Thank you. So as Dr. Dewar said, we were fortunate to have have a district wide PD on supporting transgender and non-binary students. And that was facilitated by Dr. Mills Smith Millman from McLean Hospital. So Dr. Smith Millman covered topics including different terminology, transgender, non-binary students, mental health and their sense of school safety. We looked at gender identity. We explored names and pronouns, common misconceptions and then tips for working with our students here in the district. So more specifically on terminology, we went over LGBTQIA+. So there's a few extra initials in there that I think most people are used to hearing. So the definition is lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex allies and everyone else. We also reviewed and defined transgender, non-binary, cisgender. Dr. Smith Millman helped us to take a look at mental health and school safety. More specifically, she reviewed the gender minority stress model with us. So different elements that that impact the mental health of our students or all transgender, non-binary stu- binary students. We she shared with us the increased number that transgender and non-binary youth have displayed symptoms of generalized anxiety disorder and major depressive disorders. So those numbers were were they're high, they're above seventy percent in both of those generalized anxiety disorder, major depressive orders. So something we definitely wanna keep an eye on. It taps into all the work we're doing in the within the district. We looked at the suicidal, the rates of suicide, the ideations and suicide attempts in our transgender and non-binary students. This was part of the Trevor Project. So it's not just here in certainly the statistics aren't here in Falmouth. They're through the Massachusetts and through across this Trevor Project. But it is important that we recognize that the rates, you know, there was fifty-two percent of students who contemplated suicide and twenty-one percent that attempted suicide in the last twelve months. So those are pretty staggering numbers. So it is important that we're looking at this work and we're set up to continue to provide more information to our staff, to our families and help support our students. Dr. Smith Millman discussed on the impact that COVID nineteen had on transgender and non-binary youth across Massachusetts. We looked at the safety in schools. So just about negative remarks that they might be hearing about gender expression, transgender individuals, some verbal harassment, some physical harassment and reports of, you know, being more physically assaulted. And again, I wanna make sure that it's clear that this isn't statistics here in Falmouth. This is statistics that Dr. Millman has was reporting out on where all transgender and non-binary students are. Included in that information were statistics about the experiences of our LGBTQIA and students of color when we look across are the the subgroups of students. And on a more of a positive note, Dr. Smith Millman talked about the positive impact that supportive staff have on our LGBTQIA+ students. And with that, if there if students have access to between zero to five supportive staff and then she compared that to students with eleven or more supportive staff in an environment, in a school environment. There was a decrease in the percentage of students that reported unsafe feelings due to gender expression. There was a decreased miss of school due to feelings of unsafe and uncomfortableness in school. There was an increase in the average GPA of students. And students reported they were more likely to report that they'll graduate or go on to post-secondary education. And they reported a greater sense of belonging when there was eleven or more supportive staff. So clearly, I feel quite confident that here in the Falmouth Public Schools of each one of our buildings, we will certainly far exceed eleven or more supportive staff for our students. We did discuss concepts that included gender identity, gender expression, gender attribution. Dr. Smith Millman then shared information on different types of transition within the student population, including medical transitions, social transitions and legal transitions. We reviewed names and pronouns and the importance of understanding the different names and pronouns and how it's important to be respectful and the use of appropriate names and pronouns. Within the work, Dr. Smith Millman was extremely supportive of our staff and everyone. You know, our staff, our students, our parents in community and guardians of community at large about recognizing that it's a journey and we all make mistakes and it's okay to make mistakes as long as we're continuing to try and we move forward within that. She gave us some examples of what that might look like and resources of how we can how we can continue to move forward. Dr. Smith Millman also helped us to understand some common misconceptions about transgender and non-binary youth. And Dr. Smith Millman provided us with tips for working with our students, including a question asking decision tree, examples of taking a curious stance, using gender inclusive language and validating our student experiences. Dr. Smith Millman concluded with opportunities for questions and answers. They shared resources, including books, websites and classroom lessons that we can use. And again, reinforce that that they're available as well as our, you know, our consultation with McLean staff and helping us on our journey as we continue to to get grow stronger and supporting our students that are, excuse me, are transgender and non-binary students. So just wanna say thank you for allowing me the opportunity to share out. It was a very in-depth PD session. It was very effective and we were we're fortunate to have it. So I hope I was able to share just a a touch of what we explored today and I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Thank you.
And I appreciate the overview of the PD. We don't often hear that. So that's great to have that depth of questions.
Just a quick question, Joan. Were nurses able to attend that presentation as well? Because having like a safe health space is so, I mean, of course, classroom is important, but having a safe health space is so important.
Absolutely. Actually, it was a district-wide PD, so everyone was there are including our teaching assistants, yeah, everyone, all of our contractual units or administrators. It was it was a it was a PD for absolutely everyone today.
Thanks, Melissa. Joan, I really appreciate this. And Dr. Smith Millman sounds like a phenomenal human. Any chance that the committee can get copies of the notes from today or the?
Absolutely.
Thanks. I appreciate. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for either Joan or Lori? Any other questions? Leah.
So my question actually was who accessed the PD and it sounds like was this required for everyone?
Yes, it was.
Okay, and it would be wonderful for the school committee to go through a training like this. It's one thing about getting, you know, the information, but it's another thing to actually go through the training. So I'd love for us to be able to explore that to bring maybe this Dr. Millman to us, or I think I got the name right. So thank you.
Thank you, Leah. Thank you. Any other questions or comments for either Lori or Joan? Okay, well, thank you both.
Appreciate it.
Next, routine business to approve the meeting minutes from February eighth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion? I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February twenty, excuse me, from February eighth, twenty twenty-two, second. Andrea's second is second, right? And roll call vote, Leah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Kelly.
Welch, yes.
Jerry Mederos, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrew Thorold, yes.
Brighter, yes.
And Natalie Calhoun was also, yes. And then also to approve the meeting minutes from February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion? Terry.
Terry's got it.
Yeah. Terry makes the motion to approve the meeting minutes from February fifteenth and a second. Melissa, seconds. Roll call again, Leah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Jerry Mederos, yes.
Yes.
Melissa.
Melissa Keith, yes.
And Natalie Calhoun was also a yes. Next, committee member reports. Any reports, Terry?
The Communication Committee has been quite busy of late. We had two meetings last week at T Ticket School with staff and the community at large, and we're gonna have another one tomorrow. And Natalie and Melissa and I have been, Natalie, a lot, putting putting bullets together of things that we have learned, heard from these meetings and there, we're just gonna wait until after tomorrow's meeting since everybody knows.
Yep, and just a quick follow-up on that with Terry. As she mentioned, another listening session is being held tomorrow at seven PM at East Falmouth Elementary School. I just, there was a change in location because last week we had a wonderful group of people. Wanted to make sure there was enough space. So it's going to be held at East Falmouth Elementary School tomorrow. And again, just a thank you to everyone who came out and shared their their feedback and their thoughts and their concerns. It was a really informative and helpful evening. So I just wanna say thank you for that. Any other committee member, Andrea?
So this past weekend, I was able to go to an MAS C leadership meeting and basically it was a lot about the organization and work they're trying to do to improve it. So if anybody ever had any kind of feedback on how MAS C is working or maybe not working for you as a school committee member, please let me know. I can always pass that along. And also to let you know that I saved the date. You'll you'll be getting an announcement in your email about an upcoming joint presentation from Division Seven and Division Ten, which is our CEI division. And the members from the Wampanoag Education Department will be doing a presentation. And I'm I'm pretty sure the March thirtieth date is going to hold. It's been a lot of work trying to schedule this, but you'll you'll get an email with all the details and it's tentatively, I believe it's gonna be focusing on some intergenerational trauma.
Thank you. Any other committee member reports? Just very quickly for me, on March twenty-second, our next school committee meeting, I would like an update on our goals. And that's when the communication group, we can sort of give a little bit more feedback on our listening sessions and also a report. I'm sure you've done a lot of work, Kelly, Andrea and Leah, on goal two, DEI, and then a circle back conversation related to S R funds for goal three. So on March twenty-second, we'll have a quick, brief update on our goals. And then tentatively, on April twenty-sixth, the school committee will resume our meetings open to the public at the administration building. We have to work through a few technological issues potentially to ensure that we are still able to use Zoom and and allow access for everyone in our community. But tentatively, I will go back to in-person on April twenty-sixth. So I will provide updates on that closer to the date. I just wanna say that. Yeah, any other requests for information? No. Oh, sorry. So we're onto the next one.
I just would be interested in getting an update on the work the district's been doing with the tribe and where we stand on that. Next steps.
Great, thank you. And Terry, did you?
Yeah, I people probably shut off their screens, but people, we've been talking a lot about students and I hope a lot of students will come to the listening session tomorrow because we really, really love hearing from the students. So.
I echo that. So thank you for that. Any other requests for information? Hey, is there a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Terry's second. Roll call, Leah.
Leah Palmer, yes.
Welch, yes.
Terry Mederos, yes.
Melissa Keith, yes.
Andrew Thorold, yes.
Brighter, yes.
And Natalie Calhoun was also, yes. Have a wonderful evening, everyone. Thank you.